Hey, 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 beautiful people, and welcome back to another soulful session of Mondays with Mondane, where we dive deep into the rhythm of life, love, and liberty. Well, of course, there's democracy, I think. And I'm your host, E D Mondane, and I'm ready to groove through the beats of the week with you. So grab your soda water, your hog head cheese, your crackers, kick back, and let's get into this vital conversation. The beat goes on, but it's up to us to keep the rhythm of democracy alive, and it needs to kick. Uh, let's do this together. Today, we have a special guest, Terrence Hayes, who is running for a seat as a city commissioner to a brand-new way of governance for our govern-erance for Oregon. In this episode, we're going to continue to talk about the great topic of our hometown, Portland, Oregon. The transition of Portland city government from a commission form to a mayor council system. Uh, this is a hot topic right now, and it's important that the right folks are seated at the table moving into it. Uh, the change is coming, or not just policy shifts, but a profound reimagining of our govern-erance here in this city. And we've got to start by understanding the context of this transition. The transition we're talking about involves three key changes. The introduction of ranked choice voting, the establishment of geographic districts, and a redefinition of roles within the city's leadership. Terrence, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Ranked choice. This voting process may pose challenges for communities with a limited access to education and information. You know, we're the first harmed and last informed.
Right.
How do we ensure comprehensive understanding and active participation in this new voting system? How do you, what, how do you, how do you plan to tackle it? We, we coming right off the bat.
Right, no, let's get to it. I'm gonna be honest, the, the, I've sat with so many people, and especially folks who championed this system, and who, who create, who brought it in and sold it as like a restorative type of model. And to be honest with you, they rarely explain it to me in a way that makes sense. And maybe it's because I'm used to just like majority win type of situation, but they always get into these complicated models of possibilities and ends. And then when you ask complicated questions, they always go, well, that's not, you know, it's not really possible. I'm like, well, the math says it's possible, right? And, and I haven't got a great explanation.
Whoa, 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 the math?
Well, in my opinion, the math, when you, when you say that the first, the, when you say that we can't meet in Thai places, when you're talking about ranked choice, because you're going from, if, if you don't get 51 or whatever percent is if, no, it's 25 plus one, I'm sorry. If you don't get 25 plus one, then you're supposed to take votes from the last person, move it up, depending on who vote. If that last state of people voted for you, and it's, it's just complicated. So I would say, well, what happens if, if, um, if I go, if I'm top one, but I don't get 25 plus one? Could I lose at two? And yes, you could quite possibly have the majority of favor in your area, and you can lose at two if the number two folks get more number two along with some more number ones, and you can lose at number three. So when you, when you tell me, when you try to make sense of that to me, um, and I've had the conversations with everyone. Like, I'm, I'm happy that our city is trying something new, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think those who consider themselves very educated really explain it in a way that even it makes sense to them.
Education. Another concern, we.
Let's keep walking it down.
The two-year transition timeline, uh, which could disrupt essential services and, and, and especially well, again, to the marginalized community. How do we manage this change effectively to prevent a disproportionate, uh, impact on marginalized communities? And it, it's so disproportionate that it just knocks the saying out of my mouth.
Right.
You know, disproportionate. And, 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 and we're gonna be affected by that.
For sure.
How do we deal with that?
I think we started, which the best way would have been had started a, a year or two ago, if they seen it coming. But this is the thing, we've been governed by folks that don't know how to execute. When you run a business, you looking five and 10 years out.
Well, do they not know how to execute, or do they not want to execute?
You know, I really don't, I think when you say, do they not want to, that somehow we, we give them, um, we give them control. I think most of them are incapable. I don't think they have the lived experience to execute.
Them, who is them?
I'm talking about city leadership, city council leadership during the time that, that seen it coming, understood where politics was taking our city, and did equi, didn't equip us properly.
So the status quo?
Yeah.
And the same as usual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. And, and the reason I say that is because, like, we keep choosing people that we keep saying, well, you know, they could, but they won't. I'm starting to believe they just can't. I'm starting to believe most of them do not really understand, um, how to govern and execute policy in the will of the people, because they only know how to self-serve for the most part, in my opinion.
Wow. Homelessness, social services. We gotta understand how to balance that budget to where those needs aren't overlooked.
Right, right.
The extensive community engagement that led to these changes signifies, in my mind, a willingness to be listened to by the government. I've often called it listening to the sounds of the sidewalk. Well, I think that we understand that they're in trouble.
Right.
And if, when, you know, when, when, when the status quo gets sick, we are on our way to the morgue. So, uh, how do we find ourselves in a place? And you said this should have happened two years ago, and I agree.
Right.
Wholeheartedly, but where do we fit now with making sure that we continue to engage and to ensure that the voices are heard in our decision-making processes going forth? And then to educate even now, uh, we, it's just November.
Right.
So how do we, you know, get this out and say, how did you get in?
I think the people, I think the people, I think the voices are being heard. I think it's the same voices, though. I think the same people who could always talking about championing for black and brown folks are continuing to be heard. They're getting their way at every level. The problem is, we're not being heard on the, at those levels. And so when you talk about police brutality, when you talk about economic access, those conversations are dominated by people in the name of our voices. And so when they speak, they can't speak from our experience. They can only speak based on what they think or how it benefits them. I don't even give them the benefit of the doubt of saying, well, they're doing their best. No, I think they're continuing to self-serve. I think that when you talk about marginalized communities, I'm gonna just talk about black folks for a second. When you talk about, when you talk about black folks. What happens is, is that for the last four years, we've allowed middle-aged white women, white women to dominate our narrative and control policy.
Have we allowed it, or what, or is, or is that what's been available?
Well, we don't have any power. We don't have any power. What, what seats are we sitting in where we have power? When we talked about our concern with police brutality in our community, who sat in the seats to help shift policy of policing in our communities? Not us.
You know, I'm talking to Terrence Hayes, and he's going to be running for a seat in this, uh, commission circle that's gonna govern our city. And, uh, wow, you know, you, you stated, uh, Terrence, that, uh, East Portland has been left out.
Yeah.
And, uh, they've been left out of the conversation much too long. Isn't that what you said?
I did.
What is your plan to change that? And, and, and what are your plans? A, B, C, concrete, concrete, concrete.
I'm gonna make sure, one, that I'm sitting in the seats and I'm in places to where the voice of East Portland can be heard. So I don't allow anybody to take me out of a seat where influence exists, where policies are being changed. And I'll give you an example. Um, I'll go back to the police thing. They sent this pledge out, and they said, we want everybody to sign a pledge that we won't take any money from police, right?
Mm-hmm.
And I said, I said, I will, I will gladly decline that, because it's not, what they're doing is not about the limited amount of money that the PPA can donate. What it's about is, is causing separation in the space. So what they're pretty much saying is, we want every candidate to declare that they ain't having nothing to do with the police. Well, that's really cute, but when they sitting at table making policies about how to deal with black babies, we're not at those tables, right? And so somebody will tell them how to deal with us. So when somebody tell me as a black man, that when I have an opportunity to sit with our new chief and commanders and captains, and help them understand how certain behavior impacts us, and you want me to walk away from that seat? I'll decline fast, because I'm not gonna walk away from any seat where the black voice has historically not been there and, and where I could represent the people. So how do I change, whether it's police, whether it's homelessness, whatever, the what, only way we can change those things is if we're at the table. So I'm gonna argue with the county about how to approach homelessness. I'm gonna remind people that when we talk about affordable housing, as long as it's subsidized, it's not affordable. So let's call it what it is. We wanna talk about subsidy. How do we create certain levels of projects? Because that's all projects was that we grew up in.
Yes, sir.
It was subsidy. But how do we then create them to be safer and to open up doors for economic opportunity? Because codependency has never done well for any community of people.
Not at all. Other advocates for the changes have emphasized inclusivity. Um, how can marginalized communities hold leaders accountable?
Yeah.
Uh, for delivering on this promise. Everybody talks about it, but we are still closing down DEI offices all over the nation. I, I said the wrong thing.
Diversity, inclusion offices. What I'll say is this, is that how we have, how black communities and black, brown communities, um, we have to decide what our act is, right? Usually we, again, I keep saying it, we've come to tables and somebody has continued to tell what our act is and what we want, and we don't do it. And then what happens really fast is politicians come into our communities and they say, well, if you just, if you just vote for me, if you just talk about me, then what I'll do is I'll have a, um, oh, listen when you wanna be heard. That's not an, that's not a, you know, we need acts. We need to say, well, if you want us to speak on your behalf, this is our very specific act. Every community has very specific acts. And when you win, they knock on that door and say, well, remember you said that you would champion a cleaner environment.
Yes, sir.
Right?
You know, i- it's very clear that there's a strong push for change.
Yeah.
Uh, however, with any major shift, there are concerns, especially, again, for the marginalized communities. And, 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 and what do you think some of those concerns are? Well, you, you, you just gave us a laundry list, but.
I, I honestly don't, if I can just be real, I don't care about people's concerns for marginalized communities. I care about our concerns and how we're gonna, we're gonna have demands at those tables. People can say they care, but have we, they say COVID made more millionaires in our country's history than ever.
Lord Jesus.
But black economics have declined. We have begun, we've gotten poorer as other communities have gotten more wealth.
And we need to be afraid.
That should make us nervous. So when you say, well, what I just, it hasn't worked. People speaking about their care for our communities haven't worked. It needs to be our voice that's talking about that. We went, the, the Portland School Board made a decision, and our community should have went crazy. They made a decision to decrease the standards for graduation. And their, the, the reason they said they did it was because black kids, they were very specific, black kids were struggling and couldn't meet the standards. I, my wife showed me that, and I said, this is a world where they now have so much boldness to say, y'all can't keep up, you don't have the intellect. So what we'll do is, we won't deal with the root causes that keep us from understanding, we'll lower the standard. But guess what happens? As they graduating our babies with lower standards, other communities are demanding excellence out of their communities.
That's exactly, we don't need standards lowered, we need the opportunity to shine and to show the world how resilient we've been for a million years. Maybe this is a good time to ask you, uh, 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 why you should be on the council?
Yeah.
And, 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 and make a double whammy, and, and why, why do you want this position? Why do you, why must I? Uh, why do you need this position at this most difficult time in, in society?
Well, because I believe that what I bring is the ability to be honest and build bridges, right? I think, um, anytime the black narrative has been hijacked and mishandled, all of our community suffers from that hijacking. When black communities do well, all communities do well.
When you start from the bottom.
Everybody benefit.
Everybody rise.
So for me, um, I thought that this was a unique time, not because I didn't think it was difficult, but because I felt like I was uniquely equipped to deal with these difficult times, to be honest, to have the honest dialogue with, um, our black or Hispanic, our white or Hispanic counterparts, our Asian counterparts, about how that narrative impacted their lives and how it impacted ours. And if we can deal with that, then everybody wins from that growth. So a lot of folks are gonna come and they're gonna say, uh, again, they're gonna talk about what they feel like, um, the voice of the marginalized community look like, and we'll continue to lose from that. Because historically, we have lost from other people controlling. When Asian Americans come to this country, they do not let people control their narrative or their voice, right? So when, when Asian hate was exposed, they had very specific acts from our leadership. And me and you did not speak for the needs of our Asian brothers and sisters. They spoke for their own needs. Nobody tried to control their voice.
Send your offering to, um, the, listen, the shift towards a more policy-focused city council could lead to stronger emphasis on addressing systemic issues.
Right.
Um, what are some key policy areas that we, and when I say that, you so, uh, uh, succinctly and very proficiently said, I'm gonna call it we, us black folks.
Right, black folks.
Uh, what should we be focusing on right now?
Well, I think we should be focusing on how our schools, um, see education, and how we see the trades, and how we see college, right? I think that if we want our next generation to do better, we have to remind them that not only do higher education give you access, but the trades actually give you a quicker path to wealth and entrepreneurship. See, you can ignore the fact that when you really look at what the disproportionate issue is, it's generally economics. Where, when you don't have any money, you don't have a voice. So when I'm talking about policies that need to happen, this city need to invest in not only the education of young black people, but our businesses. We need to create grants, and those grants need to be connected with people who understand businesses and will give that small business support or that developing business support. Simply throwing money at people who've never had any money has never historically worked.
Well, what about the systems that are already in place?
What systems?
Oh, yes, okay. Uh, the broader.
They ain't working.
You heard it. Uh, the broader conditions, including Black Lives Matter protests and concerns about equity. Uh, these things suggested willingness to address, um, issues faced by our community. Well, and we're losing ground real quick because it's over. Uh, but how can we leverage the support that's still left?
Right.
Uh, to drive positive change?
Yeah, there's a lot of, um, I think, well-meaning, good-hearted, um, white brothers and sisters and, and, in, in the community that really care. And, and, and what's important is, is that we tell them what that care looks like, is what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
So if they say their heart is in the right place, then they'll be willing to hear what's important to us, and that'll expose them, right? If, if I tell you what community policing should look like in my community, and you reject that narrative for your own, then I'm gonna say you don't really care. So what I'm looking for, when I'm having conversations with folks that, that say they're in camaraderie and relationship and partnership with us, I'm listening and looking to see if they're actually listening to us.
I've asked this question to other city council hopefuls, and, and I wanted to ask you.
Y'all, this gonna be a big one.
Gerrymandering. We, we, we know that the geographic districts promised localized, uh, about localized representation, but there's a risk that marginalized community may not receive adequate attention.
Well, you're marginalized.
Terrence, Terrence, Terrence.
Yes, sir.
How can we inquire equitable representation for the communities that are black and brown and look like you and me?
Right. So again, first thing, we have to stop letting people tell us where we should be represented at.
Yeah.
We have to sit at every table, and we have to not see ourselves in competition with each other.
Yes.
Especially black and brown folks. We have to stop, we shouldn't see our Hispanics and Latino brothers and sisters' success and win as an affront to us. We should actually be trying to sit at the table together and talk about how they built those small businesses and how we can take our food and do the same thing, right? So it's a relationship thing. I continue to say that the reason I will separate myself as a candidate is because I believe in relationships, but I do not believe in gatekeeping. I'm not, do not believe in you telling me what the, dominating the context of the relationship. So I think we have to get in those places. Listen, we are losing black and brown boys, especially every day, to murder, right? And that murder has happened internally. And usually I hear all these people say, well, Terrence, we simply have to deal with the root causes, but I've never really hear anybody say what that root cause is or how to deal with them.
You know, I, I'm writing a book right now called Puff Daddy Did It, But Why? You talk about your activity as a criminal justice drum major. I, I gave you that title.
Okay, thank you, brother.
After reading your work, I said, this is a criminal justice drum major. Working with the Criminal Justice Commission right on.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And thank you for your service. And the Racial Justice Council, tell us a little bit about that. I, I, man, you refreshed my heart.
Let, let me tell you something. The reason I was able to have success in those spaces is, is because, again, I came with a very genuine voice. I had the lived experience.
Yeah.
And usually what happens is they bring, we come out of jail, we're working, we're, we're doing our thing, and they say, will you come speak at this? We just wanna hear your story. And then when you're done telling the story, they might give you a stipend, they might give you a, a, a little card or something. They say, have a good day. Well, when I came into those spaces, what I immediately did was challenge the notion that they could speak for me or that they had the understanding of what it, what it actually took for me to have success separated from prison, right? And every time I spoke, I spoke honestly, I spoke clearly, so they couldn't dismiss me with some level of preconceived ignorance, right? So I came to those spaces and I said, well, um, that's well, very well-meaning, but it's actually not true. You actually don't do a service to the black community by sweeping all police out. You do a service to the black community by having officers in our community that have servant hearts and servant attitudes that actually answer to community members, right? To the communities they serve, not to some white folks in northwest Portland, right? And they answer to the communities they serve, and they have relationships with the communities they serve.
Like they did when I was growing up.
You knew the officer. He came by, he said hi, you grow him on him, meet him, probably fed him along the way, right? And then, again, the narrative got control.
And would take you home when they saw you doing something crazy.
Go, go home.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll tell your grandma tomorrow. And so what, what happened is, we no longer have those relationships. And what we, what we actually were saying in our communities honestly was, we need to find those relationships again.
Yes.
Well, they had particular issues because they interpreted our trauma, how, how privilege allowed them to.
Wow. You know, it's my understanding that you've been an active gang member.
Yeah.
Assalamu alaikum, my brother.
Assalamu alaikum.
Stop it, y'all, stop it. I don't want no letters.
You gonna get some, Pastor. It's his fault.
What's that all about, this gang stuff? And, and what are you doing now?
It's pure, so, so it's pure nonsense.
Yeah.
It is pure nonsense. It's just, it's something that people often talking about, well, that, that wasn't the intention, that wasn't the intention. Well, you know, people do well-meaning things all the time that cause destruction. And the biggest problem I have is that when we started accepting that a lot of that stuff, a lot of the way crack and gangs did, the community was systematic and intentional, somehow they started believing that that mean we don't have accountability to the behavior.
That's right.
Right? So when I was arrested for shooting somebody, I was held accountable. What happened that was a really, a blessing in my life is I decided, um, that I loved my freedom more than I loved the gangs.
Well, say that again.
I decided.
You made the decision.
I made the decision. Be, be, but again, Pastor, this is what everybody don't understand is, when you say you can fix my stuff, you're insinuating that we don't have the ability or the intelligence or the moral compass to know right from wrong starting off. Simply making a wrong decision don't mean you don't understand, most of us was raised in the church.
Yeah.
We knew right from wrong.
Yes, sir.
But we bought into a lie, and we executed that lie in gangs really well, and we got the benefit, death in jail. And we, that, that was the only benefit. So what I'm out here saying is, is stop saying that we don't have the capacity to change without you fixing everything. Just get out of the way. When you wanna put resources in the community, we have elders with intelligence and understanding that can help distribute resources. You don't have to choose for us.
Wow. My country, tis of thee, sweet land of liberty, of thee I sing. Terrence, you left me speechless, and, and, and you've left me at a good place right now, because we wanna have you back. But most of all, I, I want you to know that I believe in you.
Thank you.
And, um, I, I wanna see you on this council. So you're welcome back anytime, and we'll do whatever we can, uh, to give you a helping hand. I believe in you, I believe in your story, and I want to thank you for gracing us with your presence and for your service, um, as you have done with the criminal justice systems. And you, you've walked a walk. You made a difference in our community by doing your fair share and, um, putting your hand in the ring. Um, this has been an enlightening discussion.
Thank you.
Uh, the shift in Portland city government structure is monumental.
It is.
Transformation with the potential to address longstanding issues, and it's a good time to begin to enhance representation.
Yep.
As Portland navigates this transition, we've gotta pay closer attention to its developments to ensure a smooth transition and a brighter future for our citizens, especially for us, the marginalized community. Until next time, I wanna thank you, Terrence, once more for being here. You got any parting words for us?
Yeah, I just, you know, um, I just wanna say that I, I'll continue to say that I believe in a clean, safe, and affordable city. Most of us, when we first touched ground in this city, it was one of the most clean, beautiful, and safe. And that's why we stayed, right? And I think that we can have that back in this city, and I think it starts with honesty and truth. And that's what I'm fighting for. I'm fighting for everybody to love being in this city again. That is my goal. But in order to do that, I have to be honest, I have to never gatekeep, and I have to be willing to risk it all to do what's right. So, and that's who I am.
You know, until next time, dude, Terrence Hayes for president. I want you to stay informed, stay engaged, and, and, and above all, we, we, we need to work together for a better Portland.
Absolutely.
And the beat goes on, and thank you for listening and joining us today on Mondays with Mondane. But it's up to us to keep the rhythm of democracy alive, and it needs to kick. Let's do this together. Uh, stay groovy, stay woke, and keep spreading that love by insisting on a more just and inclusive future. I need to do some special shout-outs right now. Commercial time, uh, shout-out to our sponsors, Postshines, not just a restaurant, but an institution located at 8139 North Denver, right here in the heart of Kenton. And you can expect the best soul food this side of the Willamette. Aunties and Tonties daycare services, almost like having mama take care of your kids. And Adorn Electric, yeah, I said it, they really light up our lives, and I'm grateful for their support on this podcast. And you can visit me right here on Sunday mornings at Celebration Tabernacle, 8131 North Denver, in the heart of Portland. A special thank you to our production team, Dionne Robin, Andy and Paul. Not one of them is bigger than the other, and they all stand tall. If you enjoyed this episode, please share it with your friends and followers and turn on your notifications so you never miss a thing from Mondays with Mondane. And be sure to follow us on Facebook, right there, and YouTube, over there somewhere. And, 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 and thank you for tuning in. And remember, it's not just about the music, baby, it's about the message. And let's keep the conversation going, making a difference one beat at a time. Until next time, stay blessed and keep that light shining. You know, I talk about, a lot about, uh, knowing where you came from, to know where you're going. Well, I came from the projects of St. Louis, Missouri, and I ended up into the majestic, uh, mountaintops of Portland, Oregon. It's been a wonderful journey, and Lewis and Clark took that journey from St. Louis to Portland, and I took it, too. It talks about who I am, and as I'm with you often in the, uh, in cyberspace or on websites or on the, you know, uh, what do you call it, social media? I want you to know a little bit about me and who I am. This book talks about my fantasies, my failures, my triumphs, and more than that, it talks about the resiliency of being able to continue to go forward regardless of, um, the odds. I'd get a copy, it's called From Maladies to Melodies. And I hope that you enjoy it and give me some feedback. God bless. Hey, it's time for you to come to Postshines. Check out.
Check out that catfish sandwich.
Oh my goodness, is that the shrimp, oh boy?
Man, look at that chocolate chip cake.
Man, I need to get over to Postshines at 8139 North Denver.
Right now.
Because this food looks delicious.
Or call if you'd like.